Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call our main meeting to order. Kathy, can you please call on her role?
Definitely here. Michael Rossi?
Here.
Mike Florio. Ellen Dolgrit, I'm here. Eddie Albarino. Mike Newtonson. Junzila Terry.
Here.
Jay Mandel.
Here.
Zach Ford.
Here.
Dylan Walter. Beau Clark. Lawrence Edwards. And Susan Marcus.
Here.
Okay, let's see. Susan for Mike Newtonson. We have six people here, so we're formed all set. My chair's comments. I'll just note that our Republican colleagues are all absent because they're having a ceremony to remember Brendan Saunders, who had been their town chairman for the town committee and also had been an alternate on our commission. So no one that many of us work with. I wish them the best. Too bad it had a conflict. I will say that because they're going to be missing, I'm really pleased that none of the more controversial things have to be decided tonight because out of collegiality, I'd rather not have tried to push something through that would have disenfranchised them when they're, you know, in this moment. With that, we commute to item three, which is review of the approval briefly minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
From Susan.
I think.
Okay, second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. opposed. Standing motion carried. Thank you. We have, I will have you read the for the second one in a second, but we have our continued public hearing. Planning and zoning commission twenty-four dash two, which is the bolted charging stations. They have offered to allow this to continue the next time. So rather than do anything else, I would entertain a motion to continue this to June tenth.
Send move. Second.
Zach seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That was everybody, so there's no. Okay, for planning and zoning commission twenty-four dash six, this is a public hearing we need to open tonight. Can you please read the?
Legal notice of public hearing hybrid town Clinton in the green room. The town of Clinton planning and zoning commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. To consider the following. P Z C twenty-four dash six special exception application at Zara Riverside Drive. Earthwork could create a beam for settling basin to accommodate dredging of Cedar Island Marina. Map thirty-four A block thirteen lot one thirty-four. The applicant is Aaron Schumacher, owner S H A three LLC. And we need to receive, the app to receive a schedule for public hearing on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. At such a hearing, all persons have the right to be heard. The application correspondence are available for public inspection at H T T P S slash slash Clinton C T dot portal dot open gov dot com slash records slash one nine zero eight three. Anyone requiring special accommodation to participate in public meeting should contact the line use office eight six zero six six nine six one three three. Michael Rossi, Chairman, Town Clinton, planning and zoning commission.
Thank you. We have been informed that even though we're opening the public here tonight, the applicant would like to delay their presentation until next month on the tenth. So we have another motion, please. I'd like a motion to continue this public hearing until next month on the tenth.
And we need to officially want to open and continue, just to make sure the record.
Okay, so we're opening and continuing.
Send move. A second.
Zach seconds. Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
If we are opening and continuing, I have some comments on the public hearing part until after, some questions about the application itself. Is that now a time to ask those or?
We can do it one of two ways. It would be best to do this in a public forum when it's the public hearing is happening. If there are particular questions, if the chair would like to entertain certainly, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's something that we need the applicant here for, I wouldn't, I'd wait till next morning.
I guess it's more so, I mean, if it's okay, can I?
Yeah, and then we'll find figure that.
Yeah, all right. So one of the things I saw was there's a, the D E B had notes on it and there is a Susan Jacobson is like the permitting agent. The comments on this I just had is I was wondering what the controls are like a, any sort of like monitoring controls and limits if there are stuff mixed up from the dredging evolutions or like if the burn goes over. I was wondering if the staff would be able to reach out and see what parameters the deep is gonna, it's not like our stuff, it's the deep's kind of responsibility.
Correct. So for any of the material sediment testing that would need to be done under deep's purview for the dredge itself, we can certainly reach out to coordinate a share information as it's available. The burn itself and what is happening on this upwind area, deep will be taking a look at, but predominantly one of the reasons that it's coming before us is for that deposition of material and to make sure that that burn is constructed in a way that meets all sediment erosion control requirements and that it stays put. And that's what we have. So that will actually have our, we have our town engineer and there's some correspondence between their engineer.
And my ultimate concern if it is like, you know, you could be constructed correctly, but in a five-year forty hour, you know, it seems like it's getting work Monday through Friday, a normal workday for five years. Some sort of like monitoring to maintain the integrity of the burn is something I was hoping to understand, as opposed to just saying an inspection makes it look good, I would think.
Well, I think, yeah, I think there's opportunities that you have as part of the special exception process. You have some pretty wide latitude as a commission to discuss that. So I would have that discussion with the applicant when they're here and about potential conditions with that.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I kind of wanted to understand, when to bring that kind of stuff up. So, okay, so next time it sounds like?
Yes, and we'll make sure the applicant is prepped and knows that the question you're looking.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion to open and continue?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That was everybody, so it's unanimous. Okay. Staff reports. Not really a lot of reason to go through the two, the first two, the next three will cover when we get to know on the agenda if you don't mind. Okay, so the new business is actually the next three.
Are we gonna do the draft RFQ?
Yeah, that's when I say the next three is the P Z C twenty-four eighty, twenty-four nine is the draft RFQ. Yeah, well. I thought draft RF was down here under the business. No.
No, it's not under new business.
Okay, let's do it now. Thank you. For some reason I had it in my head to, we just, okay.
Absolutely. So what I've done for the commission is just draft a beginning outline and some content for request proposals for professional services. So that we can hire a consultant to assist with the drafting of the twenty, the two thousand twenty-five P O C D. So we waited on this until we knew whether or not the referendum was going to pass. Now that we know we have a full amount to be able to work with here, there's eighty thousand dollars in the capital budget that was divided over the last two years to put toward this effort. So one of the things that I've tried to do is just lay out some of the the basics of what you're gonna wanna see in a P O C D and try to be clear on expectations for what I thought would be a good place to start for the commission. So it covers, you know, all of the different topic areas that would be required, compliance with state statutes and making sure that the consultant can advise the commission through the adoption process. That there is a robust sort of scope of work and public engagement strategy for them so that they're very clear on what the expectations are for the work and deliverables. And that there is a clear understanding of what would be required for every person submitting a proposal to give. So we can go into it in as much detail as we'd like. There is probably additional boilerplate language that we just put out with all R F Ps for the town of Clinton that we would add in once this scope is settled. The hope is that the commission as a whole will have a chance to talk about this in June. So if there's any feedback you'd like to give now, that's wonderful. If there's questions folks have along the way, I can compile that, we can talk to the whole commission in June, but we wanna grab consensus as soon as we can on this so that we're ready to advertise. And as soon as the capital money is available in July, we can, you know, be well underway to getting an advertisement out of choosing someone. These schedules, as we've been through, you know, before. They can be compressed, they, you know, it takes time to get contracting done. And I think, you know, to the extent that we can get someone under contract before Labor Day and then, you know, even, you know, end of July, early August to try for some of that outreach. While the summer community is still in town would be lovely and that's gonna be very, very pushed to get that done. So that's.
Well, why don't we comment with, you know, the scope of work is very nice. When, you know, the one we did the last time, we didn't really advertise for somebody. We had a town planner, the group that we were using and we just stayed with them. This is much better organized and I think it's gonna get us a much better product. So I, I think it's a very, very good that section, the main thing I read, that I'm very happy with.
I'm kind of zeroing in on the technical capacity experience and outcomes with similar relevant work for the specific professionals who'd be working on it. Would like to see what they propose in terms of controls there are with swapping in and out personnel. That was probably the low point when we P O C D up with the consultant last time is that revolving door folks who weren't really up to the job.
So I, I don't have any additions to make. I think I'm very, I'm very happy with what I've seen so far, but I think, you know, we want to have everybody of shapes away.
And certainly it'd be about Clinton statement too, which is sort of my summary of a bunch of different things. So if there's other things you wanna highlight or want the consultant to know about the town, that you think are important for, you know, kind of getting a foundation for this work, that's another piece too. So yeah, so we'll be waiting for your back and we'll.
Thank you. Okay, item six, new business. A is planning and zoning commission twenty-four dash eight site plan application for two thirty-seven East Main Street. This is a change of use from a salon to a juice bar. I believe everything's in.
Correct.
So this is eligible for a decision tonight.
Where is that? Which one is that? Where is it?
Could be the one that's right across from like Key Bay. It's not the barber shop.
Oh, oh, that area.
Yeah, 'cause I see the building. So if you're facing it to the right.
Yeah.
It's two doors to the right of Taste of China and two doors to the left of Meadow Road. But within that one building.
But it's not, it's not the barber shop, like, because there's the two right next to each other, right? Okay. I just wanted to send people to figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice.
There's gonna be a tile store there, I believe.
Yes.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah. I thought it was the granite shop. Yeah.
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 That's very significant.
Our applicant is here on Zoom. So is there an agent or applicant who would like to address us?
Hi, everybody. But this is where going to be a change of business and change of use for a juice bar is going to serve six day people. Just have sitting for six to eight people and it will operate between nine, eight, even eight to nine to six in the afternoon. And it will unemployed to one to two employees. And they're not, there's not going to be any cooking deep frying, just a juice bar and maybe coffee. It's not, that's not really decided yet. And yeah.
Okay, so seating is about six, employees about two to three maybe. So the parking calculations show that you have enough parking. The other issue, is there any changes to the exterior?
No changes here.
Just the sign and.
Cause the sign. I mean, that's.
Yeah, so that's, that's all set.
We got not the spare footage of the sign or anything else. Right. Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, and how would you feel for going towards like a, there's opportunity in town for like a transit oriented style as we see going on? Any sort of interest in bike racks or accessibility from pedestrian traffic? I understand this parking spaces, but any interest in having any sort of invitation to pedestrian traffic for customers?
Pedestrian traffic, yeah, I would love to have pedestrian traffic as well. So that I see there's not many people, there're not many pedestrians. In Clayton, so you're mostly focused on providing parking and people who have cars. But yeah, of course, that's a, that can be a plan for future.
That leads me to my question to the, you guys, is there an additional process or would that be a, there's a small thing to do?
So, so Mr. Chairman, the, so Mohammed, I think the question is, I think, would you be, if there's not significant pedestrian activity at this location, are you willing to consider adding a bike rack to the site in order to encourage folks who might be biking by on route one to be able to stop and have a place to put their bikes?
Yeah.
That kind of application, there's not a requirement to do it, so it's really a matter of are you willing?
Yeah, so if there's a demand, of course. If there's a demand.
So one, one thing, so if there, if Mohammed takes a look at this and there's, it sort of fits into his business plan and he can find a spot for it, then we can work together. And Kathy isn't working very, very hard with them to make sure this application is in order. So she can continue to do that and make sure that.
Yeah, it's not a requirement.
Yeah, I guess my question was to bring up if there were any additional steps to do something like that.
It's sort of a volunteer piece here, but it's a site with recycle plans. It's not the same thing as a special exception, so we can't put extra requirements.
I wanted to make, yeah.
Well, one thing is if he decided he wanted it, can he do it?
We can just do that through staff. And that's kind of what I was, I wanted to make it.
Yep.
Probably discussed.
That's where I thought you were. Yes. Okay.
Sure.
Okay, yes.
All right, and the applicant is not planned to include any entertainment in this, just the service, is that correct?
To my knowledge, yes. Mohammed, there's no extra entertainment plan?
What, what do you mean by extra entertainment?
Like music or anything of that nature, or is it just, just the food service?
It's just the food service.
Just one point clarification. I think you said there was seating for six. I think in the plans we're seeing eight. I know it's not.
I think that's six days. So the parking accommodations.
But it works either way.
Yeah, he has, he has more than enough.
Thank you. In that case, are there any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan.
Yes, and I provided for anybody who, there is a draft motion if anybody is.
If anybody knows, can we read the draft motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I propose I move to approve the site plan for a change of use from a salon to a juice bar at two thirty-seven East Main Street and adopt the findings of fact one and two of the staff report. I need to be the findings.
Staff work for the record.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Right there. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Okay, it was unanimous, so.
Mohammed, it was approved unanimously.
What?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next one is planning and zoning commission twenty-four point, or dash nine site plan modification for one fifty-one, one fifty-three East Main Street. Modified sidewalk accessing the site from separate one to one with the roadway. The applicant is Thomas A. Stevens and Associates. Owner of the property, Solution. Do we have an agent or applicant who's here?
Oh, yes, Tony Baldock, agent for the applicant, actually the, the owners. So just a quick rundown. You guys proved this back in twenty twenty-one and I'm sure you've driven by and seen that they've gotten underway. We're still ironing out the last of the easements for the property. And so we've talked over, talked this over with John Gianotti a little bit. He's the hammocks and tidewater. And a big thing that came out of a lot of those sub, out of those two subdivisions is we installed a sidewalk in the hammocks and found that even though there is a sidewalk there, everyone walks in the road. And the reason being is people walk side by side. It does sidewalk even at four feet wide isn't enough for two people to walk on. So in tidewater, we actually widened the road and people frequent that all the time. They walk side by sides. It's it's, it's not even, actually, it's not even striped, but it has worked out well there. And so that brings us to where we are with this project. Originally proposed a two-foot separation between the road and the sidewalk. And after talking this over with John a little bit, to think this is probably a better fit than if we just push the sidewalk right to the edge of pavement, make a small one. In the winter time, that's perfect because instead of having somebody shovel the sidewalk, you know, after it's been plowed over the power truck, this makes them one and the same. So they just come down, plow it, the sidewalk area is, is plowed at the same time. We'd propose that we'd stripe this off, so there is a pedestrian defined lane. And I think that's pretty much it. Guys have any questions?
So in other words, Pat, you're going to just change the position of the sidewalk to a level with the road? And that's what your proposal is?
Correct. Did the screen switch for you guys? Did you see, I don't know, cross-section?
Okay.
Is the sidewalk level with the road or is the sidewalk now being pushed so that there's no divider between that and the road? And then you're increasing the, in that area, putting the walking area?
Correct. So we're pushing the sidewalk up against the road, so there is no divider between it anymore.
But there's a difference in height still.
No, they'll be bent even. That's why I tried to flip to this. Let me try and reshare and see if that shows up. Okay, so if you can, if you see this here, this is a cross-section of the road. Originally, there was a two-foot separation to the sidewalk. But they were all graded in the same line, so it all runs the other side of the road, the drainage ditch. We designed that with the town engineer. He thought it was a good, good fit. So now we would like to take the sidewalk and just put it right against the road and stripe it so it's defined as a pedestrian walkway.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, you're moving the sidewalk, you're not widening it?
Nope, yeah, we're just moving it right against the road. So essentially, the road will be four feet wider on one side.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
So other than this striping, there'll be no visual difference between the road pavement and sidewalk pavement. It'll all be asphalt, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Whereas the prior proposal had had the sidewalk probably as concrete instead.
Uh, yeah. It was concrete and it was, but there, and there was also a two-foot grass strip between.
Grass verge, okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
Is, so will there be, there's gonna be no indication of the difference between the road and sidewalk? Not even like one of those stick figures?
So it will be.
Don't drive on this.
So there will, there will be, there will be a stripe. So we'll take, you know, four feet off the edge of the roadway, we'll stripe and again, yes, a stick figure. You know, defining that as a walkway. So we can paint it striped or we can put the pedestrian symbol in it.
I think right now there's a pedestrian detail in the lower left corner of Tony's screen that shows what the car at the post corner is.
Yeah, there's, and if I could flip one more time. So tidewater has, again, no.
I didn't realize that that's actually what.
Tony, you're. He froze.
I think we lost Tony.
Um, it's just.
Tony, if you can hear us, we lost you.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, you froze for a second ago. So if you could just rewind your presentation by about thirty seconds, we'll begin.
Okay, so this does before, right, so before you, on the left-hand side is the hammocks and you can see, you can see my cursor. This is the sidewalk. And on the opposite side of the subdivision, and it's just pavement straight up. There's no pavement markings or anything. And it's just, it's very pedestrian friendly. It's, you know, it's not heavily trafficked because it's not a through road. Exactly like we're proposing here. It's just a dead-end street, so it won't be heavily trafficked.
Makes sense, right? I mean, I, it's similar to my neighborhood where I live. It's wider, so there are more rooms, the best things.
I mean, if the pedestrian lane signals on that.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense. That's good.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments?
I see the pedestrian.
Okay, well, there's a draft motion in the.
Actually, I did not write a draft motion for this, but I wasn't sure, the commission hasn't really had a chance to go through it. So basically, what you would need to do is essentially vote to amend the site plan as approved in two thousand twenty-one with the modification to the pedestrian lane attachment to the.
I, though, I move to approve the site plan amendment from two thousand twenty-one to as proposed by the applicant.
Okay.
That's it.
Three seconds. Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just comment for the record that I think the visual of a separate concrete sidewalk would be much more aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
I also would like to comment how there's no increase, the staff report indicates no increase in the permit area. And so water management plant not really gonna be affected, so it's not really, it seems to be so, no significant environmental effect on adding more space.
Well, same with.
Yeah.
Sir, can you repeat your comment?
My comment is that I think that a concrete sidewalk separated by a vegetated verge from the asphalt the traffic wave would be much more aesthetically pleasing than the one paved area. Whatever the functionality is, I think it would look better with the real sidewalk.
Okay.
I believe, I also say it's a little safer.
Movement people, there's a little breath. I mean, then there's no doubt where the sidewalk is and where the road is, but I understand this is the applicant. So a concrete sidewalk with rain or whatever, wood chips in the road looks a hundred percent better than a wider road, but I'm not sure, you know, like he said, it's kind of a dead end.
Right.
No one, you know, no one driving through there at forty or fifty miles an hour.
It's not that big a lot. It's hard to get up to forty there, I, you know, I. But yeah, that's a good point.
And my comment back to Zach's about marking it, that does, for me, makes it very user-friendly to know that this is in fact a walking lane rather than just an extra wide road. So I think that's helpful that the applicant's already planning on making that distinction.
And I do think it provides like a lot of value in terms of like the transiting of our community. Like, I think it's a good idea for sure to to be expanding these and inviting people to do more walking and.
to be expanding these and inviting people to do more walking and biking or whatever in a safe way, so I think that's a good proposal, proposed change.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of this motion? Number three, those who oh wait, which way are you going? I, I went too fast.
Oh, aye.
Okay. And then opposed? Ellen, okay. Thank you. And now the next item on the, on here is our site plan application for waterside lane relocation of the basketball court. This one, they've repositioned the court, so now it fits and does not run into any of the other issues that we've had with it. This is, again, it's, the application is complete, so it's eligible for a decision tonight. Do we have anybody here to present this?
And our, our parking recreation director, Beau, asked that I give a quick overview if there's nobody on who is this.
Okay, go ahead.
So fundamentally, this is a totally revised application, they've shrunk down the overall paved area of the proposed basketball area, so this would move that conflict with kids playing basketball and families that play basketball in the current parking lot, it would move over to the location where they were proposing before, but at a much reduced area. The other piece is instead of running parallel to the parking area, it would run perpendicular with the basketball court being sort of on the waterside, it would still have that ten-foot flat coated metal fence, so balls would be contained within that area, so it's just a smaller plan than it was before. The plan that submitted is entirely outside, fifty-foot buffer to tidal wetlands, so, so that's all okay. Deep had previously commented on the old application, which had a greater impact, that they were okay relative to coastal policies with this going forward. So we didn't send this one back up to them for a repetitive review, but I don't anticipate any additional you know, concern on their end, especially reducing, I think is a good thing. So what I tried to do is lay out a recommended motion to approve based on the rest of the parking regulations listening to the commission's comments and trying to provide something that was compliant with the regulations and essentially make sure that the findings in fact required for the coastal site plan are in place.
Any questions, comments? Concern?
Well, I think the big concern last time was the five feet of pavement.
Right.
Right?
And then within the buffer.
Right, so now he's removed.
Totally out of the buffer, yeah.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I guess a quick question.
Yeah.
On the plans, it, it doesn't look like any parking spots are affected or anything like that, is it, the fifty-two is just the width? It's not any drawing into the parking area?
I think there's three, sort of three spaces just to the north of the, where the current dumpsters are that are affected, but if you recall, they're picking up additional spaces, they can strike more spaces on the other end. So they won't lose as much parking here as they would if they really pulled the old design out, so this is sort of a minimal impact to parking at the installation.
Thank you.
I move to approve application PZC twenty four tag ten for coastal site plan at the Clayton Town Beach as shown on plans titled Instruction of Basketball Court at Clayton Town Beach prepared by the WBA Group Incorporated dated April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four with the following conditions. One, bents and basketball hoop structures shall be installed in a manner to withstand flood forces. And two, prior to start construction, the contractor shall contact the zoning enforcement officer to review installation of erosion and sediment control measures. And adopt the following finding of fact, the project as condition incorporates reasonable measures to mitigate potential adverse impacts to coastal resources and future water-dependent development activity, and two, the proposed application as condition is consistent with Connecticut general statute, section two two A, tag nine two.
Thank you. I have a second. One of, one of them got invited. Okay, any other discussion? I, I just want to say I'm really pleased that they modified what interests our concern. I think that's really great, and I'm very pleased with that. Okay. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Aye, we got you.
Okay, yeah, I said aye.
We, we, we heard you, thank you. Okay, so that passes also. We have two items under, or actually, yeah, we have two items under old business. It's not labeled that way, but we do. One is the electric vehicle, which is continued, so we're not doing anything with that, the other one is the burn in, for excavation, and so that's continued, so we don't have anything to do with that. So we can move on to committee reports and the regulations committee, would you guys, yes?
Just a quick question about fact, I know we're taping the old business that Berman's up. The questions I have are gonna kind of require a little conversation before the next meeting, if that's possible, I don't know how we should relay that to the applicants.
Well, yeah, give questions like that. It's good to let the office know because they can relay that to the applicant, so the applicant can prepare to answer your questions.
You mean like call you guys during the leaders?
No, I think I've got a good summary of how the government will go on and
Yeah, because that, that's, that's the appropriate way, you would not directly contact the applicant. You always go through the office, let them do that. Very good. Okay, committee reports, regulations committee. I completely spaced and missed the meeting last, last week or two weeks ago, whichever it was. I apologize, I don't know how I did that. Okay, so do we have a report, who, who was there?
I can, I can speak for anybody who was, was there, can give a, give a summary, I have a little, little one. So we, I gave a brief presentation and I forwarded that around to the rest of the commission members, so if you weren't able to attend, at least those slides are there, you can kind of take a look at them on your leisure, the, the plan going forward, and the idea behind the presentation was to start to get an idea of what kinds of design aesthetic people like, what we don't like, and try to get a little more specific about what it is we do and don't like about them. So in that presentation, there's a slide on sort of some of the commonalities that members were describing when we had asked for this sort of photo assignment to bring things back. Both for, for sort of the pluses and minuses of design around town. And, and sort of remembering that section thirty covers commercial and then industrial properties, also multifamily technically. For all properties in town, it doesn't talk about, you know, single family or agricultural properties, but but this is not just the downtown discussion, and I know that's how this started, but it's broader than that. So this section is sort of our interim opportunity to get more specific and be more clear about what I see with design overall. And then out of the PSCD process, if there's recommendations to go forward with specific zoning for a downtown district or something different, that's another, a different step. So this is not going to be as specific as, you know, form-based code or, you know, very, very detailed the, either design requirements in building, but we can, there are some real good places for improvement in here. So the topics for the next meeting, we'd ask folks to think about preferences for signage materials, we know the sign regulations will have another will have another go with that as part of that section, but, but really, are there you know, things you do or don't like in terms of color or material or, or sort of those design elements, so to say. Building materials, parking location in front of or behind buildings and kind of how we orient parking on sites and how they want to think about the wording that exists in section thirty today for pedestrian access and connectivity and get a little stronger about making sure that those, those elements between properties are, are covered. It's not why, but in the next committee meeting.
Is there a reason in particular that you're ruling out a form-based code for maybe the, a couple downtown blocks?
Not ruling out as a concept, but it was, sort of direction came out of the commission in previous discussions that because we have the POCD coming, because the town is participating in this thrive program, which is a capacity building program around transit-oriented development specifically in downtown falls within that area. The idea was to wait until that planning exercise had gone forward, make sure that that recommendation is included and incorporated into the POCD, if that's what the commission wants to go. So that the POCD kind of flows with the zoning, so that we're not skipping ahead on the zoning before the POCD really catches up to it. So that was the direction for before.
Go ahead, Zach.
In the meeting as well, Abby presented examples of like completely done and like thought out. Other, yeah, other towns as an example. If those are available in the presentation, right?
Yeah, I can send those ones out.
Yeah, you could like distribute those so people can be prepared, but examples.
Because you, I know you discussed the fact that some of them do a lot of photographs or draw, I don't know if photographs or drawings of what they, elements they like, so that they can
Yeah, yeah.
Seem pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.
There's a lot of overreun, it's, it's a little bit of funny in our section thirty, so we have appendices to the, to our zoning regulation that we, I included it in the slides, you can go take a look, there's sort of like good design, bad design, the bad design is just a white wall, so we, we can be more specific.
It really helps to the people when they go to VRB for signage. You know, I was saying at our meeting that, you know, in Old Saybrook, that's where I'm from, you know, they you know, look at the colors, whether they want light with dark background or dark with light background, or the down with loose neck lighting, or maybe font, or so there's different things to look at to, you know, if, if the commission is interested in kind of making it more formulaic and not. But maybe they don't, maybe they want to do something to that. That photo itself. There we go.
So we've got, and we will be having another regulations committee meeting and hopefully I'll actually make it this it's the third Thursday of the month.
First Thursday.
First Thursday.
The next person here?
Yes.
It looks like June sixth.
June sixth, okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have the town of Madison.
Yeah, they've communicated a zoning regulation text amendment. Concerning historic farm uses, I think. The public hearings on the twentieth of June.
I didn't have any comments. Anything else?
I didn't.
Okay, so no comment at this time for most. With that, I would go to entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move?
Second, great, any discussion?
No, no discussion, aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned at seven forty-six, thank you.